Good evening, everyone, and welcome to tonight's special meeting of council. I welcome those present and I declare this meeting open at 6pm on April the 29th, 2024. Welcome those in the gallery. The City of Swan acknowledges the traditional custodians of this region, the Wajock Nunga, people of the Nunga nation, and their continuing connection to the land, waters and community. And we pay our respects to elders past and present and their descendants. The terms and conditions of entry into this meeting are posted on the door as you enter. And please ensure that you have read them prior to attending this meeting and abide by them. Tonight's attendance and apologies, we have everyone here. We've not yet got councillor Singh. We'll see if he comes shortly, but everybody else is here. They have no leave of absences or apologies, but if we do have any leave of absence, please fill out the form underneath the desk and hand it up to the CEO. Declarations of financial proximity interests and interests affecting impartiality. Councillor Bowman declared an impartiality interest in item 10.1, which was the Eastern Metropolitan Regional Council. Future arrangements, as he is a councillor of the EMRC. Are there any other declarations of interest? Not so far. If there is, please hand those up to the CEO. And public question time, questions and answers recorded in the minutes of the meeting may be summarised in accordance with the Local Government Administration Regulations of 1996. All questions received for this meeting have been answered and have been included in this schedule. And all questions will be published in the minutes of this meeting. So 5.1, a questions relating to reports contained in the agenda. We have none. And 5.1.1, questions of which due notice has been given. And again, we have nil. 5.1.2, there are questions without due notice. I don't think we have any tonight. So we move on. So other than those that have already had their questions answered, and I don't believe that it was anyone in the gallery. So if there was someone in the public wishing to ask a question, they could on the items on the agenda. Deputations, we have nil. And leave of absence, is there any elected members requiring leave of absent that we already asked? A second call? Lucky, not for a special council meeting. There we go. Councillor Bowman.
Madam Mayor, with your indulgence, I'd like to move a procedural motion. And that motion is to change the order of the business. So propose to spend section 13.1 of the meeting procedure local law, clause 2.2, order of business of the meeting procedure local law to change the order of business. So as the order of business be item first one, 8.2.1, financial advocacy priorities. The second one being proposed 24, 25 differential rates and specified area rates. The third one being 10.1, the Eastern Metropolitan Regional Council. And the last one being 8.1.1, Department of Local Government Standardised Meeting Procedures Consultation Paper. And the reason being so that all business can be finalised in the one meeting. And we can potentially have an open and frank discussion on what will be the last item.
Thank you, councillor Bowman. Have we got a mover? Sorry, a seconder? Councillor Henderson? Is anyone against? No? Carried? All right, so if you just turn to item 8.2.1, which is the financial advocacy priorities 2023 to 2025. Proposed amendment motion by councillor Bowman. Councillor Bowman, if you'd like to read your alternate motion, thanks.
Thank you, madam mayor. Madam Mayor, I move that council resolves to: One, endorse the list of 70 projects outlined in the 2023 to 25 financial advocacy priorities list and actively advocate for these initiatives for pre-election funding pledges. And two, that the projects on the advocacy list per ward be included in each of the next ward to Swan scoop newsletters, the city's website and other appropriate channels. And the reason being to share with our community what projects are on our advocacy list.
Thank you. Do I have a seconder? Councillor Miles? Councillor Bowman, do you like to speak to the motion? Or is anyone against? It's carried unanimously. Let me move on. We move on to 8.3.1, proposed 2024-25 differential rates and specified area rates proposed by motion by councillor Henderson. Councillor Henderson, if you'd like to read your alternate motion.
Thank you, madam mayor. I move that council resolve to: One, advertise and invite submissions for the following proposed differential rates and minimum rate for the year 2024-25 financial year. Do you want me to read out the tables?
Yes, please.
Okay, under gross rental value properties, residential being 7.7756 in the dollar. The minimum rate being 975. Commercial industrial, 9.9943 cents in the dollar. And that's a minimum rate would be 1,525. Heavy industry, 16.7544 cents in the dollar. Minimum rate being 1,835. For unimproved properties, UV general, 29 point, sorry, 0.29866 cents in the dollar. Minimum rating 975. UV commercial, 0.52744 cents in the dollar. Again, 975 minimum rate. And for farmland, 0.24722 cents in the dollar and 975 minimum rate. Two, endorse the attached aimed objectives of the reasons, objectives of and reasons for each differential rate and minimum, which includes a proposed 3.98% increase to the 2023-24 GRV rate in the dollar and 3.98% increase on the 23-24 UV rate yield. Include $659,040 additional expenditure to the draft 24-25 annual budget for the purposes of additional tree planting and other initiatives to better the city's urban forest. And the reason for my proposed change is a 3.98% rate increase will increase the rates revenue by $722,415 compared to a 3.5% increase. And after accounting for reserve movements, there would be an additional $659,040 available for expenditure. This additional revenue should be expended on improving the city's urban tree economy through additional tree planting and other budget initiatives to improve the city's urban tree forest, which has been identified as a priority in the city's most recent community engagement survey. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Henderson. The CEO just has something to say.
Thank you. Just before we move or consider this, the office's recommendation had included an additional table for the specified area rates. And I've just noticed that they are missing from this alternate recommendation. Might I suggest you include a point four, that as per the office's recommendation, point three, the table in that, rather than reading it all out?
Agreed, madam chair.
Okay. Thanks, councillor Henderson. Do I have a seconder? Councillor Miles? Councillor Henderson, do you wish to speak to the motion? Sorry? Or is there, we can skip to anyone against?
I have a question.
Question, councillor Haller.
When did we receive this alternate motion?
Through you, Mr CEO.
Thank you. It would have come through on last Friday, from memory. I noted we had ANSEC day in between, so we lost a day's productivity. I saw the next version of it today, but last Friday.
Received on Friday, I think sent on Thursday night.
Okay. Is there anyone against? Do you wish to debate it? Yep. Councillor Henderson?
Councillors, I want to start off with what it actually means for this slight change in the rates for this year. If you consider that the cost per week is going to be an average of about 13 cents per resident or six or seven dollars per annum. That's a very small amount to pay, considering that we had such a resoundingly strong request from our community when the community survey was presented to us only last week. And that made me think that if the community so significantly wants to see more watering and more tree maintenance and more trees planted, then we have to look at how to achieve that. And this is one way towards it. And a recent motion was to attempt to get more funding for tree planting. This spreads the load across everyone, which is, in my mind, the better way if the community want it. Don't forget, this is going out for advertising, as I said. And if the community come back and say, no, 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 we didn't mean that or we didn't want that. Well, then we do have an option when we actually do bring down a rate to be able to say what we might do to resolve that question. The other thing is that if you look at Treasury Corporation's latest economic analysis, they're saying that we saw a 1% rise in Q1 of this year, which indicates that we're not seeing a drop in our inflation and the cost consumer price index. So we have got to be responsible and sure that, to ensure that we can, in fact, meet the requirements of the city. We've had quite some time, three years in a row of no rate rises. And then only a small one last budget. The city's a long way behind as a result of that, but we had to do that during COVID. And I was certainly much one of the great supporters of doing that for the community at the time. So we do have a responsibility to ensure that we're able to look after our needs, our parks, our gardens. And if we don't do that, well, I'm already getting complaints that verges aren't being maintained properly, as an example. Now, that's just one thing, let alone all the others. So I do have quite a bit to cover, madam mayor. So I will be asking for an extension if I get to the deadline, which isn't far away. The important thing here is, what can we do with 660,000 more dollars to service our community? And that's...
And that's your time, councillor Henderson?
We've had too many extensions.
Is anyone against?
Thank you. The question is, what can we do with that? Well, we've had a very hot summer and we've lost a lot of trees. Our tree planting this past season has copped it pretty hard. And the result of that is, well, we can only put so much water out there with so much money. It costs a lot more to maintain a tree after planting it than it costs to plant it, buy it and plant it. So I'm hoping to see a better survival rate of our trees as a result of better initiatives and watering. So to put that money towards it goes a long way towards what councillor Knight was asking with his motion to put more money into trees. And I think that's very important to recognise that it is a substantial sum. And when we come, when people come back to us with their response to our advertising, we'll certainly know what they want or what they think. So councillors, this is still responsible. We're still under 4%, albeit a tiny amount. But the amount 3.98 was calculated based on how to get the numbers to work. If you look at other councils, the average is above 4%. So given that, we are certainly working very hard to ensure that we keep our rates as low as possible. And I've always advocated that. I've never advocated zero rates. It's not achievable, particularly in such a massive council as Swan.
Thank you, councillor Henderson. That's your extra two minutes.
Thank you, councillors. I urge your support. Thank you.
Councillor Miles, do you wish to speak to the motion? Thank you.
Thank you, madam mayor. I appreciate councillor Henderson moving this motion. Obviously, everyone is struggling right now in the particular economic environment we're in. But after three years from 2020 to 2023, financial year of zero rate rises, obviously, it becomes increasingly challenging for our city to maintain the level of service delivery and infrastructure investment on drums. So I think we all understand that there will need to be a rate increase of something to supply our city with enough revenue to operate and to deliver the great services that people in Swan expect from us to deliver. I do think this change will give the community an opportunity to provide their feedback and let us know what they think of it and if it's worth the money. And after we give them the opportunity to give their feedback, I'm sure we'll consider it very carefully. But ultimately, and I agree with councillor Henderson, we want to make sure that we have the least amount of pain put on the household budget with the smallest increase possible, but also managing to have an increase to fund the services that we're expected to deliver. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Miles. Is anyone who'd like to speak against the motion? Councillor Catalano?
Yes, thank you. I don't support the 3.5% increase and I certainly don't support 3.98. I mean, let's call it 4% increase in the rate in the dollar. That's going, and I don't support it going out for public comment either. Last year, when this item came up, I talked about slashing the proposed budget. This year, I slashed the proposed budget and all councillors were sent a copy of that. And I removed items upon which this councillor is going to spend millions of dollars, proposed to spend millions of dollars on very contentious projects, such as the Midland Oval, the Bell Dura Play Space, Henley Brook Avenue, Eric Lumston Rav Road, Morrison Road upgrade. And I gave councillors very good reasons as to why those items should be taken off this budget this year. Contentious items, we should not be spending millions of dollars at this time when people really are feeling the impacts of inflation. You're right, inflation is affecting everybody. We should not be spending these huge amounts of money on projects that we don't even know are going to be successful. And we certainly know that they are contentious in the community. With my budget that I sent to you all, I found over $10 million worth savings. In fact, when I sort of added it all up, it was near on 15 million. The thing is that I was right about, when I put it in my email to you councillors, I said that people out in the community had told me that they wanted their streetscapes improved. And I was right, the survey did show that. Because that's what they told me. They don't want the big ticket items. They want their streetscapes tidied up, money spent on them, tree planting done. And that can be achieved with the savings that I made and there'll be no rate increase either. So I don't think there's any need whatsoever for this 3.98 or 3.5% increase. I think it's time we rationalised our spending on these huge big projects that we don't even know if they're going to be a success. We certainly know that they are not supported by all of the people in those communities. And we need to just put them on hold and concentrate on what our ratepayers want, which is money spent on their suburbs, on their verges, on their streetscapes.
Thank you, councillor Catalano. That's your three minutes. Is anyone who'd like to speak for the motion? Anyone like to speak for the motion? Councillor Bowman?
Thank you, madam mayor. Councillor Catalano said inflation is affecting everybody. That includes the city of Stirling, the city of Swan, sorry. Look at the local cost, government cost index, and it's actually higher than inflation. Streetscapes improved, we all hear it time and time again, that our community wants their streetscapes improved. This comes at a cost, a cost that requires rates to go up. Councillor Catalano talked about her email that she sent around. I thought it was 12 million, but 15 million dollars in savings. I can assure councillors that it's not 12 or 15 million dollars in savings. You cannot take a funding project like Henley Brook Avenue, where we're getting grant funding, and say, let's remove that. But let's take the grant funding and let's put it on another project. That's not how it works. Councillors, also, when you've got projects that are coming out of reserves, if you're not going to do that project, the money doesn't come out of reserves. You need to look at where it's coming from. If it's coming from municipal, that's where you have the savings. Councillors, this is to go out to advertising, advertising only. But let's look at the original draft budget that was first presented to council. I asked the question, I did the figures. The rate increase that was required was closer to 6%. Then staff looked at cutting costs, they increased some income, and it got down to 4.5%. That 4.5% has now gone to 3.5% because we're balancing our budget with a loan. I don't agree with that, but that is what was that. Councillor Henderson is now suggesting a 0.48% increase to go on trees. I would like to go out to the community to consult, to ask the community, are they willing, every rate payer on average, are they willing to pay $6.80 extra to spend more money on street trees, our urban forest caribou? We hear it in our surveys, we hear it from councillors. But let's see, when we actually say, you need to pay for this, whether they want to pay for it. Councillors, I understand our budget is a complex issue. And I'm not going to go in specific of the budget because that's not what we're talking about tonight. And acknowledge not everyone has a financial background like me. But we are all aware that if we add more services or we want to build more things, it comes at a cost. It comes at a cost. Councillors, I question our renewals and our upgrades. We are spending less or proposing to spend less in this budget than we have on the last four-year average. I hear it in these council chambers. We always get it in Allenbrook, we get it in the newer suburbs. Well, that's actually DCP funds that pay for a lot of that. But where are the upgrades and renewals usually going?
Thank you, councillor Bowman. That's your three minutes.
Older suburbs?
Yours might be a bit shorter. Keep going.
Councillors, we've been told what the additional costs are. Staff costs are going up, that's 50% of our budget. There is additional increased service, for example, youth services. We're not even spending more money on our ovals and our streetscapes, I agree. But if you want to do that, that increases the cost. And councillors, on my final note, I often in a certain kind of habit now, around these chambers, when we're all happy to put our hands up to vote for a new service or a new asset, I usually say what that is in a rate increase. $1.5 million is 1%, $150,000 is 0.1. We need to keep thinking about that.
Is anyone who'd like to speak against the motion? Councillor Dawn?
I'd like to speak against the motion. I agree that, yes, I acknowledge that of councillor Henderson, what he said about that we're behind other councils in lifting the rates, but we're also behind other councils in the vacant land rates of councillor Knight, that he'd actually brought forward as well.
Just one moment, if you could just take your seat for a moment while I hear the point of order. Councillor Henderson?
I was saying vacant land rate is not relevant to this because it's been dealt with.
Yes, thank you. Councillor Dawn, if you could continue, please.
Okay, thank you. That is my point, is that now that we're slugging the local resident for lifting the rates, when we were opposed, it was voted down. A wealthy owner's, an architect in Cotterslow...
A wealthy owner, an architect in Cotterslow, you didn't want to impose a rate increase on him and now we want to slug the local resident again and spread that across all the suburbs. And I disagree with that.
Thank you, councillor Dawn. Anyone like to speak for the motion? The microphone, thanks. Does anyone like to speak for the motion that hasn't already spoken? Is anyone who'd like to speak against the motion? Councillor Pudovnik?
Okay, this is a higher rate rise than what is being recommended by the city in our report to council. And I agree with councillor Catalano's comment. It is practically 4%. We should be looking at ways to reduce our rates, not raise them. And if this motion is not successful, I foreshadow the officer's recommendation to go out and advertise a 3.5% rate rise. We're already a council that spends money on tree planting and our ratepayers are already paying for it. Our current budget for tree planting is 2.2 million and 1.3 million is on the draft budget for next year. That's 3.5 million dollars over two years on tree planting. That puts us in line with our strategic community plan, which makes tree planting a priority and it meets our council-endorsed target. To achieve a balanced budget, the rates modelling requires an increase of 3.5%. We don't need to go higher to around 4% to plant trees. Instead, we should look at ways to plant more trees without raising rates by encouraging more property owners to take advantage of our free tree giveaway. Those figures are down this year for some reason, less people are taking advantage of our free tree giveaway. What can we do to educate and motivate more people to plant the free trees we give away to residents? How can we get more of our free trees planted? Should we create a programme that makes it easy and fun for community groups to go out and tree plant together? The trees that developers plant as part of their subdivision is not included in our budget. We have guidelines that we give to developers that require them to plant trees. This doesn't come out of our budget. The developer pays for it, not ratepayers. Is there an opportunity to increase the number of trees that needs to be planted by a developer under our guidelines, again, at no cost to the ratepayer? To achieve a balanced budget, we need to go up by 3.5%. We don't need to go higher to around 4% to plant trees. We can look at other options. Please don't support this motion.
Thank you, councillor Pudovnik. Is anyone like to speak for the motion that hasn't already spoken? Anyone who'd like to speak against the motion? Deputy Mayor?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. Yeah, councillors, there's no doubt that the Community Business Perception Survey has told us very clearly that our community want more trees. And the annual meeting of electors also has indicated that they would like to see more trees and more planting. But there have been other surveys as well. Councillors, about six months ago, there was another survey and that indicated that the vast majority, well, not the vast majority, the largest single group of voters wanted a 0% rate rise. So that's very clear to me. Now, councillors, had councillor Henderson been proposing a 0.48% rise on top of a 0% rise, it might have been something I would have considered voting for. But that's not what we're looking at. Councillors, at this meeting, we are advertising a differential rate. We're going to receive submissions from the community. We will then proceed at a later date to revise the budget and make the final rates submission. Councillors, we can still achieve, as councillor Catalano has outlined, a 0% rate rise. It is true that it's not a simple thing to do. Not every capital item can simply be withdrawn because many capital items comprise both municipal loans, DCP and potentially other items, grants, which make it difficult to actually revise the budget. But nevertheless, there will still be some items in there that can be withdrawn. And I think you saw the email that came around recently from staff indicating how to, the relationship between the capital works budget and the rate-setting statement. We can also look at ways of reducing our operational costs. So councillors, it can be done. We can achieve a 0% rise. We can plant more trees. And for those councillors who weren't aware, in 2020, I and another councillor worked together to put together an alternative budget. It's the first time this council had ever done an alternative budget and we'll be doing that again. So councillors, I urge you to vote against this. I think 3.98% is inappropriately large. Thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I'll just ask again. Finally, is there anyone who'd like to speak for the motion that hasn't spoken already? Is anyone against the motion who'd like to speak that hasn't spoken already? If there's not, we'll put that to the, sorry, right of reply. Councillor Henderson?
Okay, thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to start off with the proposed multimillion, 12 million saving concept. Councillors, we all know that projects are started, contracts are written, that money is spent. So you simply cannot rip up a contract without consequences. So that one sits in the trashcan. The other issue here is I'm surprised that a council would say that the community do not support us growing more trees. It would seem as though they have asked us to do that. So we should do it. I just want to cover one point.
Point of order?
Just one moment, councillor Henderson, if you could just take your seat, please. What was your point of order, Deputy Mayor?
Which councillor said that?
Sorry, if you could just be clear, what was your point of order?
Which councillor said that the community does not support more trees?
I don't have to answer that question. It's up to the chair to decide.
Which councillor? It's a false statement.
Just one moment. Councillor Henderson, you did make that statement.
Yes, and councillor Catalano said she does not support the community's opinion.
Okay. Just one moment. We've got one and two. Okay, so no point of order, but please just refrain from making that comment. Councillor Catalano?
In fact, I said quite the opposite. I said that I'd been listening to the community and what they wanted was better streetscapes.
Thank you.
And that is exactly what I said.
Okay. So councillor Henderson can continue, please, but can you stick to the points, thanks?
I wrote the words down here. So continuing, we're talking about slashing a budget. Well, you can slash a budget, but guess what? You're going to miss out on all those verge requirements and the like that people are asking for. So the next I've got is how do you reduce costs? Well, I'll tell you what, we've already done one heck of a lot of cost reduction. We've worked very hard. In fact, in the last three years, we have worked harder and harder and harder at getting our costs down. Any business will tell you, you can only cut your costs so far when things start to fail. And they are starting to fail, councillors. Guess what? People are complaining like, I've had so many complaints about verges this year. So many complaints. So the point is they're asking us to do these things. If we go to a zero rate, what's going to get cut? You all know what's going to get cut. It's going to be the parks, the gardens and those things. We have a responsibility of a rate rise this year. Otherwise, it's already caught up with us, by the way. We're behind the eight ball, if you have a look at the figures. My time's just about up, but I want to make it clear that we can't go to developers and say, you plant more trees. Because guess what? They have a formula. If they don't like the formula, they'll go to SAT or the state and say, hang on a minute, we're doing our share, we're doing what we have to do, go away. So it's a nice idea, but developers have got their costs. And don't forget, if you load more costs onto them, guess what? They're going to have to pass those on to the buyer. Just to finish, councillors, this change from the 3.5% is only $6.80 per household for everyone to share in a greater, greener environment. Please support my motion.
Thank you, councillor Henderson. I'll put that to the vote. Those in favour of councillor Henderson's motion, raise your hand. Councillor Ringo, councillor Bowman, councillor Jones, councillor Miles and councillor Henderson. And those against, deputy mayor Johnson, councillor Catalano, councillor Dawn, councillor McCulloch, councillor Knight, councillor Zanino, councillor Pudovnik, councillor Howlett and myself. So the motion is lost. Five nine. Thank you very much. Now, councillor Pudovnik, you foreshadowed the officer's recommendation? Right? Just come round. Wait, so the city supports the motion? Hang on, wait till we move down a bit. Wait, just one second. We're just going to move down.
All right, just moving the officer's recommendation.
That's fine. Do I have a second now? Oh, councillor Zanino? Do you read the speech to the motion?
I move the item be put.
Thank you. One moment. Okay. Just one moment. Okay, so we need to vote on that procedural motion first. So those in favour of the procedural motion. So we have councillor Ringo, councillor Bowman, councillor Jones, councillor Miles, councillor Zanino, councillor Henderson and councillor Pudovnik and myself. And those against, deputy mayor Johnson, councillor Catalano, councillor Dawn, councillor McCulloch, councillor Knight and councillor Howlett. Carried eight six. And now we're going to go back and vote on the item. So those in favour of the officer's recommendation? You raise your hands. So councillor Ringo, councillor Bowman, councillor Jones, councillor McCulloch, councillor Zanino, councillor Henderson, councillor Pudovnik and myself. And those against, deputy mayor Johnson, councillor Catalano, councillor Dawn, councillor Miles, councillor Knight and councillor Howlett. The motion is carried eight six. Thank you. So those in the gallery and those watching at home and online, we'll be going behind closed doors now. And... And...
David, this one, but not that one.
And that one too.
Okay. On the reason?
No, that's a bit involved.
Okay. And the, what was fourteen to one, thirteen to one? Do you have to read that out there or not?
No, you just need to realise what council has made.
Which is resolved.
Yeah, read this.
Okay. Okay, back on?
Yes.
Okay, we're now back online, come back out from behind closed doors. For those that are watching at home or those that were in the gallery, the council resolved to, this is 10.1 Eastern Metropolitan Regional Council Future Arrangements. So the council resolved to, one, advise the EMRC and its members that it intends to initiate a review of alternate waste disposal options to inform further decision-making on the city's ongoing membership of the EMRC. Number two, invite the EMRC and its members to participate in this review, providing data on service needs, sharing the findings and costs of the review. Three, request the EMRC to provide a copy of the Deloitte's analysis on the withdrawal of the City of Belmont from the EMRC to help inform the review. Four, ascertain legal advice as required to inform the review and outline how any transition arrangement could be undertaken. Five, undertake and complete the review by November 2024 and provide a further briefing to council members by that time. Six, request the EMRC pause its recruitment of a new chief executive officer until the review process has been completed and determination of the city's continuing membership of the EMRC is resolved. And seven, request a response from the EMRC to all members' councils by May 31, 2024.
We need to go back to item one. We need to go back to item one.
So now we move back to the beginning of the Order of Business and we move to 8.1.1, which is Department of Local Government Standardised Meeting Procedures Consultation Paper. So, someone to move the officer's recommendation? councillor Miles, do I have a second there? Councillor Bowman? Do you wish to speak to the motion?
Is there anyone against?
Is there anyone against? Do you wish to debate it? Yep, thank you. Councillor Miles?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm happy to move the officer's recommendation. I think the state government is doing well to ensure that there's some uniformity across the sector so that residents and community members are able to have an accessible experience with council meetings as there are often quite a lot to get our heads around, especially myself as a new council member, it is quite convoluted and confusing. But however, I think the CS Swan already has quite a good meeting procedures local law already in place and I think the department will definitely take ours as a good standard for the rest of the sector to take on board. And I think the comments provided by the city in consultation with the elected members is good and I am happy to move the motion.
Thank you councillor Miles. Councillor Bowman?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Madam Mayor, I don't agree necessarily with everything that's in that attachment, but I think there may be some amendments or some changes suggested by some councillors. As I spoke at the workshop or agenda forum, to have a standardised meeting procedure for every local government the size of us compared to the size of San, 200 people maybe, maybe a few less, to those local governments that have agenda forums, to those that don't, all that sort of stuff will not work. It will be like when Walga asked for a review of their overall Walga thing, whatever it was. Constitution, thank you Mr CEO. It was on the top of my tongue. Couldn't agree. It couldn't agree, so what happened, it all just fell over. The department's going to do what the department wants to do. I think they've already written it, but I'm really looking forward to listening to some debate from some councillors on some amendments. I know councillor Johnson's got, councillor Johnson, you're there, councillor Henderson may have a couple as well, so. But just want to make the one point, and it was mentioned in an agenda forum, is it our submission or is it the City of Swan's submission? Well, I think our submission is the City of Swan's submission. And the other thing is that perhaps there were some councillors that weren't happy with a couple of responses. I looked at those responses and the staff have done exactly what we have previously passed in resolutions. So for them to put something different there, you then potentially would have me standing up saying, "I'm sorry, but who gave you the authority to put that response in? That is not what this council's previously decided with." So please, if you don't agree with something that we have previously made a resolution on, it's not the CEO's fault, it's not the manager of governance or whoever wrote the responses, it's this council who actually voted on those items previously.
Thank you councillor Bowman. Does anyone like to speak against the motion? Deputy Mayor?
Yeah, thank you, thank you Madam Mayor. Yeah, look councillors, I'm opposed to the officer's recommendation because I think that the Department of Local Government has done a really good job with its proposed standardised meeting procedures. It's worth looking at what the department is trying to achieve. The department is reforming the Local Government Act and the proposed reforms are based on the six themes, all of which are relevant. So basically, the first one is early intervention, effective regulation and stronger penalties. Next one is number two, reducing red tape, increasing consistency and simplicity. Three, greater transparency and accountability. Four, stronger local democracy and community engagement. Five, clearer roles and responsibilities. And six, improved financial management and reporting. So I'm reading that directly off the department's website. Now what advantages do these, do the standardised meeting procedures local law give our community? First of all, members of the community will have five minutes to make a deputation, increased from just three minutes. And that's point four, stronger community engagement. And how long do our agenda forums take now? Sometimes they don't take half an hour. Next point, councillors will have five minutes for their speeches, up from three minutes now. And given the complexity of city business, councillors do need up to five minutes. And councillors, that's stronger local democracy, that's point four. Movements on notice will require only one week's notice instead of current three weeks. That's point two, reducing red tape. Councillors will no longer need to provide two days' notice of alternate motions, but again, that's reducing red tape. And finally, the proposed standard meeting procedures allow, suggest that meetings should go until 11pm. And again, that's increasing the efficiency of the local government. Councillors, in the event that this motion fails, I would foreshadow write a motion that writes to the Department of Local Government advising that we support the standardised meeting procedures local law and to congratulate the department on a job well done. Thank you.
Thank you Deputy Mayor. Does anyone like to speak for the motion? Amendment? What's your amendment?
I'd like to amend fourteen to yes. And I'd also like to amend twenty to yes.
Is that it?
Yeah, so that there's five minutes for the public to give presentations and there's five minutes for members to debate a motion.
So acceptable to the mover? Do you want a minute to look at that?
That's a no from me to make it quicker.
Okay. I'll be proposing that as a motion. Okay, just one moment. Just one moment. Councillor Catalano, sorry.
Catalano, second to councillor Johnson. You've called but it's in or against yes, so now when you debate, debate the amendment.
Councillor Catalano? He has to, she has to.
Through a meeting procedures, if someone wishes to debate it and they do so, that's what we proceed to.
Councillor Catalano, you have three minutes.
Thank you. Look, when this came up last time, I was opposed to any restriction on the public informing us about issues that affect them. And again, I'm opposed to restricting any time that the public comes along and gives us information about the issues affecting them. And the five minutes is what we had before and it worked well before. And what five minutes does, particularly for public participation, is it's really important to this council because it creates healthy, engaged and proud communities when people feel like they're being heard by their elected members and we're responsible, because we're the ones responsible for making decisions that affect the issues in their communities and lives. And it's by listening to them and giving them a voice, we are upholding our democratic system of government and we're also meeting community expectations and enhancing the reputation of the City of Swan. Reducing the time that the public can speak to members of this council is not a good thing for this council because it limits the public ability to impart information that it considers important and that may be relevant to decision-making that is in the public interest. And it stifles the democratic process of council, which is contrary to the Local Government Act. The public expects that local government is accessible, transparent and accountable. These expectations won't go away just because we make a submission or because we want them to. The state government considers five minutes is the right amount of time. I consider it's the right amount of time. For a long time, this council considered it was the right amount of time and that's what we need to let state government know. That's fair enough. The public provides us with specialist knowledge that we on this council don't have and there's a lot of passion out there and we really do learn a lot from people who speak. And, I mean, I think in terms of council debates, I think it's a good idea if councillors are given the full time. I mean, you don't have to take it. If you want to restrict your speeches to three minutes, well, good on you. But if you want to take that extra time, I mean, like the last council meeting I attended, there was quite a considerable number of you around this table that were taking five minutes and asking for extensions. And in fact, by asking for extensions, you're in fact holding the meeting up. So, you know, that could have all been dealt with by councillors having the five minutes.
Thank you councillor Catalano. That was the three minutes.
Question?
Question councillor Anderson?
Are you going to deal with these individually or together?
Through you, Mr CEO.
Thank you, it's been put as a single motion.
Okay. Councillor, sorry, Deputy Mayor?
Oh yeah, thank you Madam Mayor. Councillors, I am supporting councillor Catalano's amendment because it is in line with the department and as councillors are aware, with the department's plan, as councillors are aware, the department is determined to see stronger democracy and stronger community engagement. One of the things we've seen councillors is that many of our speakers giving deputations over there at that box are often relatively inexperienced and often are unable to compress their speech into three minutes. If you're not an expert speaker and you're not well-prepared, it is quite a difficult thing to do. And we've seen quite a few speakers have had their speeches chopped off and we've missed the point they're making. So I think five minutes is reasonable. If that's the standard at other local governments, and it is, and if that's the standard the department believes is correct, then why are we thinking that three minutes is appropriate? It really isn't in my view. The other point is that the new standardised meeting procedures local law does not limit the number of deputations either. So that means everyone who wants to speak gets their full five minutes. Five minutes for councillors, this is a large and complex local government. Many of the issues that we deal with, if councillors want to make a specific point require quite a bit of time to explain. I personally have found it at times challenging and frustrating to limit myself to three minutes when I've got a lot of points, I have to write out a speech and then toss out two-thirds of them in order to fit into the three minutes. And yet we see councillors regularly asking for an extra two minutes. So it appears that five minutes is the standard for councillors on this council despite the fact we've got a three-minute limit. And in which case, why should we also limit the community to three minutes? Five minutes is the standard across every other local government and it should be here. So that's why I'm supporting councillor Catalano's amendment. Thank you.
Thank you Deputy Mayor. Does anyone like to speak against the amendment? Councillor Bowman?
Thank you Madam Mayor. And just to correct councillor Johnson, five minutes is not standard across every other local government of the 139. We talk about uniformed.
Point of order, I think it is.
Just one moment councillor Bowman, what was your point of order?
Can you give us some examples? I've done quite a comprehensive search and I can't find any.
Councillor Bowman?
I'm sorry, I'm not here to answer his questions.
Thank you.
In which case, it's a misleading statement.
Thank you councillor Johnson. If you could withdraw that statement please.
I will draw the statement that not every local government is five minutes, since you asked me, Madam Mayor. Uniformed, I talked about uniform before. It's impossible to have a uniform meeting process for local governments that do different processes. Standards, we talk about standards. Name another local government whose standards...
Sorry councillor Bowman, your point of order. Councillor Catalano?
This is about amendment change of minute times and going on about uniform standards is not relevant to this issue, which is about the minute times.
Thank you councillor Catalano.
You've got to give reasons why, that's not acceptable.
Councillor Bowman, if you could stick to the amendment please, which is the change items fourteen and twenty to a yes.
Okay councillor Johnson, talk about standards. Standards, what standards of local governments have two four-hour meetings for one meeting? Councillors?
Point of order. Sorry councillor Bowman, just one moment. Councillor Catalano, what's your point of order?
You just ruled that he needs to address the five minute for the motions and the debate and also for people to, the public, to give their deputations. And then he carried on talking about something irrelevant.
Councillor Bowman, if you could continue please.
Thank you Madam Mayor. Madam Mayor, this council, from the department, because we were spending five minutes talking, we were lasting four hours and four hours. The standard in local government is not to have eight-hour meetings. Madam Mayor, we can talk for five minutes now, it's three minutes plus two minutes. And councillor Henderson asked tonight to actually speak for longer and he got approval. Madam Mayor, my understanding is anyone that presents a deputation can do also three minutes and then ask for two minutes as well. Madam Mayor, when people come to present five minutes or three minutes, often is not the best format. Madam Mayor, I've sent about 12 email responses today to members of the public asking questions. I've met with two ratepayers on-site to do with issues, both of them going for a lot longer than three minutes or five minutes. It was 30 minutes and 43 minutes. Madam Mayor, whether it's three minutes or five minutes, I don't think it's going to make that much of a difference. Madam Mayor, five minutes was causing this council to be not the standard council and to go for two meetings. Madam Mayor, this council agreed to a way forward to reduce those. And Madam Mayor, that was to speak for three minutes. But Madam Mayor, if councillors want to then go for two meeting nights for five minutes, and I love to speak, Madam Mayor, I'm quite happy to speak for five minutes.
You have 20 seconds left councillor Bowman.
Because then my debates will go longer, maybe they'll last two minutes. So Madam Mayor, as I said before, I think the department's going to do what they want to do. They're going to try and create this rule, one-size-fits-all, and it's not going to work. But Madam Mayor, our council meetings are going to go a lot longer than one night.
Thank you councillor Bowman. Does anyone like to speak for the amendment? Councillor Henderson?
Thank you councillors. First things first, I think the three-minute rule that we set in our past set of meeting procedure local laws was a bit of an experiment to see if it could in fact shorten our meetings. We're still having meetings going past 10 o'clock. I support this because I actually think that the idea of three minutes failed. And there are times when, in fact tonight I asked for a two-minute extension because I thought I needed it, I wouldn't have had to ask for that if I had five minutes. But importantly, you may not actually get an extension. Someone might agree to giving you an extension. They might just want you to sit down and shut up because some of us do talk too much, councillor Bowman. Sorry. I'll make one other point and then I will sit down. This is the state government asking us what we think about five minutes. And the fact of the matter is, they're going to tell us what it's going to be anyhow. So by asking the question at five minutes would seem to me as though we're going to have five minutes, like it or not. But I said at our briefing that we're talking about our meeting laws, we should tell the state what we think. In my view, five minutes is adequate and we can sit down and be quiet after one minute 22 to go.
Thank you councillor Henderson. Asking, is anyone for the motion? Councillor Howlett?
You're against.
For? Do you want to go against? Against councillor Howlett? Do you wish to speak for the motion? The amendment to the motion, thanks.
Thank you, and I won't even take three minutes. A lot of changes have occurred to reduce the length of the council meetings and namely, I would say that the agenda, the size of the agenda has reduced a lot due to the delegated authority that's being used at council and as such, we I think are afforded the extra time to bring it back to five minutes because in my opinion, the role of the councillors debate, discussion and deputations. So I would be very happy to see it returned to five minutes.
Thank you councillor Howlett. And I'll ask again last, is there anyone who'd like to speak against the amendment? Is anyone would like to speak for the amendment? If there's no further speakers, we'll put that amendment, no, write a reply, councillor Catalano?
Uh, yes, thank you. Look, I just wanted to, um, just pick up on that, you know, you can just put your hand up and ask for an extension. Well, you know, we know it doesn't always work that way. And that last meeting that I attended here, the last ordinary council meeting, in fact, it was very unfair on other councillors who more, who more than likely, like myself, I, I just, I'll say like myself, who would have liked more time, but who know, if they'd put their hand up and asked for it, they probably wouldn't have got it. So, because, because, um, you know, the, the kind of issues I was speaking on and the opposition to it in this room. So, it's been unfair. It has been unfair, uh, on councillors in this room. Um, and I just want to say also, reducing public access to decision-making or, or public, uh, deputation time has not reflected well on the city at all. Uh, you know, there's quite a lot of commentary out there about, uh, people should be allowed to come in here and use, uh, a good amount of time, five minutes, to give their, to put their views across. And really, the limit on the number of councils, uh, the number of people in the gallery speaking to council really has been arbitrary, and, uh, it really didn't, uh, meet the complexity and the needs of this council, which are actually extremely, uh, huge and diverse, as we all know. And, uh, there's, uh, and, uh, we need to have, uh, a number of pe-, as many people who want to speak, speak. A lot of people have said to me that they can't, and they haven't been able to get in, 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 on time to make a delegation. That's really been, uh, uh, a, a bad look for us, but not only that, it's acted in our own detriment. So, you know, let's get on board with the state government. Uh, five minutes is, is a, is a good amount of time, uh, for debate. It's a good amount of time for, uh, public to give their views, and we shouldn't be restricting the numbers of people, anybody who wants to come in here and let us know about things that are affecting them. That is what we are here for. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Catalano. We now put the amendment to the vote. Those in favour of the amendment, if you raise your hands. Here are deputy mayor Johnson, councillor Catalano, councillor Dawn, councillor Miles, councillor Knight, councillor Henderson, councillor Prudovnik and councillor Howlett. And those against? Councillor Ringo, councillor Bowman, councillor Jones, councillor McCulloch, councillor Zanino and myself. The amendments carried? Did you have?
Eight-six.
Uh, eight-six.
Madam mayor, I'd like to put some amendments.
Councillor Henderson?
Eight-five, nine-five.
Just one moment.
That's it.
Okay. Yep.
We're just checking.
And that, it's all right, we'll just take that off. We've got two, it's all going to be deleted. There we are. So, one, two, three, four, five, seven, eight, it's to eight. Two, three. It's eight thirteen, eight and five, it's thirteen. So, can I just have that again? Those that were in favour of the amendment, please raise their hands again. You got it this time?
I've got it, yeah.
Okay. So it's eight-five?
One, two, three, four, five. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, that's right.
Yes. So it's carried eight-six. Okay, so that makes us take us back to the original motion, but councillor Henderson would like to propose an amendment? What was your amendment?
Um, madam mayor, I've got quite a few that I've circulated to councillors, and I'd like to deal with them individually, if I may.
How many have you got there?
I haven't counted them, there's a lot here.
Can you give us a rough figure?
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, oh, no, that's not true, that's eleven.
Haven't?
Madam mayor, can I suggest-
Thirteen, fifteen, I think, sixteen or seventeen.
How many? Seventeen?
Yeah.
Can I, can I suggest perhaps to assist in councillor Henderson's, sorry, seventeen, eighteen, whatever amendments? Are we able to suspend standing orders and obviously the relevant sections, uh, to allow us to do that? Would that make it easier? Just a suggestion.
If you have, yep. Those-
So, question?
Through you, just one moment. Deputy mayor?
Yeah, the question is, which parts of the meeting procedures, local law, are we suspending exactly?
We haven't suspended anything just yet, just confirmed.
So, so, Mr Deputy Mayor, if I can, through you, madam mayor, that's why I said I suggest, would that help? I didn't actually say what sections, it was a question, because I'm obviously thinking we could take a long time if we debate one, and then we move another one and things like that. It was just a suggestion, uh, without actually stating exactly what.
Through you, Mr CEO?
I've got a question.
Question, deputy mayor?
The question would be, uh, could we, uh, start the process of doing the amendments and see how quickly it goes? And then after three or four of them, we would be able to estimate how long it would take and determine whether there's a different way of doing it.
That'd be quite long.
Give him a minute to speak.
Yes, through you, Mr CEO.
So, through the chair, procedurally, there are two ways ahead at this point in time. Uh, picking up the deputy mayor's point, you have to open, uh, each amendment and debate it without knowing what all the items are that, uh, the individual wishes to speak to. The other way ahead is to suspend meeting procedures, local law, in, in full, to allow you to not move into recess, but to have just a general discussion on the items that councillor Henderson, so he at least give the meeting the flavour of, uh, what he's seeking. You might discover that a number of them are simply minor word changes. However, if they are complex like the last two, then we will best be dealt with them as a complex motion where each one is dealt with individually.
Councillor Henderson, are there minor word changes or are there any that are complex in that seventeen?
Uh, madam mayor, there's a mixture of them, um, and, um, I'd, I'd say there's probably more minor than there are that are significant changes to the officers.
Approximately, how many significant?
Give me a moment. I've colour-coded them red, send this around, so. Um, two, three, four. Sticky paper.
And how long?
Um, five, six, I think.
Six, four.
Six, uh, that are-
Major changes?
Well, they're, they're against what the officers are saying.
I want a suggestion. Through the chair, if you want a suggestion at this point in time, madam mayor, I would recommend you suspend standing orders for a period of fifteen minutes to allow councillor Henderson to, uh, advise each of the clauses he's seeking to, so the members get the gist. Uh, at that point in time, you start moving the motions, otherwise you'll be here until midnight to get there.
Okay.
I'm happy to move that.
I have a second, uh, councillor Bowman? Is anyone against? Deputy mayor, do you wish to debate it? Thank you.
You need to put that-
Put that to the, so we put that to the vote?
The motion is to suspend standing orders for fifteen minutes to allow for an open debate. You've got to move it a second, madam chair.
Thank you. So those in favour of, uh, suspending the meeting procedures for fifteen minutes, I had councillor Catalano, councillor Dawn, councillor Ringo, councillor Bowman, councillor Jones, councillor McCulloch, councillor Miles, councillor Knight, councillor Zanino, councillor Henderson, councillor Prudovnik, councillor John, and myself. And those against? Deputy mayor Johnson. So that's carried?
Carried, uh-
Okay.
Twelve-one.
So it's carried twelve-one?
So, through the chair, um, the meeting will now proceed to a, a process which is under your control.
Mm-hmm.
But the meeting procedures, my suggestion would be allow councillor Henderson to at least address what he's seeking to discuss, perhaps clause by clause briefly.
Councillor Henderson, you ready to begin?
Thank you, madam mayor. So number three, I'm suggesting a word addition to the second paragraph. It says, if, if Swan was required to allow elected members' questions, and then I say on non-agenda-related items at the ordinary council meeting. And so that's, that's quite clear about what the intent is.
Question, deputy mayor?
Yeah, um, which section are you referring to?
So we're on page one of eight. There's a big sheet here.
Number three, general meeting procedures, calling meetings.
Do you have a copy of this?
Okay. Or, paragraph two.
I've not got that, I've not got that.
Needs to go to the meeting agenda.
Yeah, I've got it.
Can I use that to go off?
Page twelve.
Can I use this one? Yep, that's fine. Do we have any spare copies at all?
Three, is the order of business suitable? Is that the one?
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right. Do you have a question?
I just wanted to understand exactly what-
Okay. Is everyone clear about where we're finding those? Yep. Okay, if you're not during the meeting, just put your hand up and we'll, we'll guide you back to where we are. So councillor Henderson, in, uh, number three, second paragraph, you want to change?
I want to add the words, on non-agenda-related items at the ordinary council-
That is your change there in the red?
That's the proposed change.
Okay.
Aha, good. That helps.
So we'll make it a lot faster, hopefully.
So that's, um, number three.
So that's, to me, not completely-
Just one moment, just one moment while we hand everybody a copy. If we could just keep it down for just a moment, we'll get these copies. This will make it easier for you to reference and find those changes. Hopefully we can move through these quite quickly.
So you've only got fifteen minutes.
And remember, fifteen minutes, so.
You've got to ask, ask him to, ask him to explain what he wants to do. Let him keep going through the list of, uh, the members.
To go all the way through?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, so these are councillor Henderson's recommendations. We're going to go, we're going to move through them. So if you mark if there are any there that, you know, you wish to, uh, debate, that's probably the quickest.
I've got a question about this one.
Question, deputy mayor?
So we're saying, if Swan was required to allow elected members' questions on non-agenda-related items at OCMs, this raises a real concern that it would not be able to complete council business in one meeting. But what if they were submitted in advance in writing? Then it would not extend the meeting in any way whatsoever and would add enormous amount of value. That's true, but it does not make it clear that you could, uh, ask a question in writing.
Getting into the, the, I think you're going through the whole lot.
All right. Councillor Henderson, if you can just go through and move through those seventeen?
I've got a further question. So, you know.
Just one moment, please.
I'm happy to go through them, madam.
Can I, can I ask a question?
If you mark your questions next, then we'll come back to them at the end.
Okay.
Okay. Councillor Henderson, if you can continue on?
Next, next one is number four. It was just an addition because the commentary in the paper talks about, uh, absolute majority, uh, required, and then I just added to it, uh, the officers that, yes, we agree, absolute majority. Now, the next one is to remove all the, uh, the text and write-
Which number are you onto now?
Five.
That five?
Um, remove all the text and just put yes. Other proposed requirements for, for when a quorum is not present or lost suitable. And I think that they say yes, to me, that, that we should just say yes because the content of the officer's recommendation is strange, I, I don't understand it. Um, the, uh, next one I had is number six, and these are, these are the controversial ones, I've highlighted them red, uh, because they're specifically against the staff. Um, remove the staff's recommendation and add the words, is eleven PM the appropriate time? What I'm suggesting, uh, Swan, uh, for Swan, earlier meetings, times of five-thirty to ten-thirty would aid in resolving meeting closure times, so to give you five hours. After that, you can get poor decision-making, so we could have our dinner at five and then five-thirty, get into the meeting. So that's a, uh, a suggestion there that I've raised before, but it's up to you if you want to go with it.
So, are we commenting as we go?
Are you asking for a question or you-
Yeah, I'm just saying, this is a decision of council some time ago. We moved from five-thirty PM to six PM to allow working councillors and those members of the community who are nine-to-five workers to be able to get here on time.
We'll debate these at the end, we'll just keep moving through. Councillor Henderson?
I knew that, I knew that one was the controversial.
Deputy mayor, we need to get through these. You can mark yours up as to where you, you know, want to ask a question.
As long as we're going to get time at the end, yeah.
Yep, we will. Can we keep moving through?
Absolutely. Number seven, um, I said yes, uh, number eight, I said yes, uh, number nine, I wanted to add a point five, and that is-
So, sorry, in nine?
Number nine.
Like to add?
Add eight point four. Um, the, point three, is it?
Yep.
I thought we already had four points there for it. Number nine, one, two, three, already there, in the run sheet. Uh, by the way, I, uh, my, the, my text that's on this sheet you've got is wrong, uh, the-
Are you using the large copy that we've just given out?
The, uh, I'm, I'm saying is that if you look at page eight of twenty in your agenda, there are three items there already. This text is wrong. I've obviously copied and pasted the wrong stuff.
Want to use the big one?
Um, it's, it's going to have the same, it's going to have the same answer. So, forget all that, on, on page eight of twenty of the, uh, the agenda, there are three items there suggested by staff. And I'm saying we add a fourth one, which is the question must be from a resident or ratepayer of the city.
Just one moment. Just compare what you've got yours.
So, not the side three sheet?
Just one moment, no, we're just looking on the, the hard copy here. All right, so you do have, it's point four on here, the, which is the question must be from a resident or ratepayer of the city. So it's a bit hard to see because it's not on this big sheet here, but it is in the original copy.
Yeah.
Councillor Howlett? Just one, just one moment. Councillor Howlett?
So, if I have a question about this particular item, do I ask that now?
No, at the end, that's right, thank you.
So, question, when we're talking about where we are, where are we in this? Because there seem to be several different documents.
So we are currently on page three of eight here.
Page nine.
Over here.
Page nine in this blue document.
Here, there's an extra point on the computer which is, uh, point four.
So this is not page nine then?
No, this is, there's, that's missing here, which is on your screen. Have a look at your screen.
Yeah.
And point four is there, the last one.
Madam mayor, just to be-
Just one moment.
To be clear, what you're seeing on the screen is what I put into the spreadsheet and it's wrong.
Just one moment, councillor Henderson?
That's point three on here.
Yep, and this one is on the computer, but it's not been updated on here. Councillor Henderson?
Can I just, uh, make a suggestion?
Just one moment. Councillor Henderson?
If you go to your agenda, to page eight, as I said, the spreadsheet that I've given you is incorrect, I've cut and pasted the wrong information there. There's three points there provided under number nine at the bottom of the page, which are the staff recommendation. I'm asking for a further point four, which reads, the question must be from a resident or ratepayer of the city. Okay, I'll go with that. That make sense?
Page fourteen. One, two, three, there.
Can I, can I make a suggestion at this point?
It is, yeah.
When we-
Alright, excuse me councillor Henderson.
My suggestion is that when we are referencing documents, can we be clear which of the two or three different documents in front of us and exactly what page are we looking at?
So currently at the moment, the large sheet that you have in front of me, we're looking at number nine, up here.
Yes.
Okay, and you'll see in the red writing, it's point three, the question must be from a resident or rate payer of the city. But in the hard copy which is on your screen, there is point four, which is IV, point four missing. The question must be from a resident or rate payer of the city. Is there anyone unsure about where to find that?
Just to be clear, the text above that is not the text from the city. The text from the city is on page eight of twenty or page fourteen of your agenda.
Copy here, just to make it more confusing, which is up here.
Through the chair, the only thing that's missing is point one and the officer's current recommendation of eight of twenty. That's the bit that's missing from there, if you add the point one back, then the rest will follow.
Okay, can we keep moving through then?
So that was just the additional part for part nine. Moving right along. Should a person representative be able to speak on behalf of the city? The city says yes and, and I say no because I, I think it's.
We just need to get through those point changes, so if you could just explain where you're up to, you're up to point?
Page, point ten.
Point ten?
City says yes, I say that's the representative, the, the person who's speaking should be the one attending. And a, a registered professional or practitioner representing an applicant and could speak at an OCM. But not, in other words, they can't have someone speak for them at an ordinary council meeting, they should be able to deal with that through the presiding officer.
Blue writing removed?
Yeah.
Okay.
Eleven, yes, twelve, yes, thirteen, yes, fourteen, we've dealt with over the page. Petitions, number fifteen, I wanted to add, after the words example ten signatures, there should be a maximum of two hundred and fifty words detailing the petition. So that's to stop people writing rambling letters.
So that's where you've added in, yours is the red writing, there should be a maximum of two fifty words detailing the petition? That's correct?
Yep.
Okay, thanks.
That's up to them to work that out. There we go to sixteen, I say yes. Seventeen, under seventeen, add to the officer's recommendation under seventeen, should the motion be accepted by the presiding member as warranting addition to the agenda in less than fifteen working days? It could be included as a supplementary item. So that gives you an option to if something's important or you can't get it done inside those fifteen working days. Okay. Number eighteen, I'm saying an additional part to eighteen and that is after the officer's recommendation, add the words operational matters are to be avoided. And on nineteen, again, this is a red marker, the, the, the rules for formal debate. Officers say yes, however, the seconders should be able to reserve their right to speak at any time during the debate if they so wish, rather than after the, the mover, this can improve debate and, and time taken. So that was number nineteen. Number twenty, we've dealt with. Number twenty-one, amendment, yes, with the exception of asking specific questions on matters raised during debate is the addition.
Adding that in?
So just, just round forces that you can ask questions. Then twenty is a yes from me, as is twenty-three and twenty-four and twenty-five. Twenty-six, I'm saying remove the officer's recommendation and say yes, any additional procedural measures needed and that is, oh sorry, the first part of the officer's remains and then other procedural measures should go directly to the vote without further debate. So currently we can have a, a say when, after procedural motions move. Twenty-seven, yes, twenty-eight, yes. Twenty-nine, there'll be some opposition to this, I'm saying, officers are saying no, I'm saying yes to changes to the electronic meetings procedures. So no, councillors should be in attendance, in person is much more interactive, a screen isolates that and as noted at thirty and thirty-one, that will come to below. So thirty, officers say yes, I say no, techno, technology fails regularly, it should not be used as an escape from going out to a meeting. Thirty-one, officers say no and I say yes, this may be useful for committees and agenda forums, but not decision making where matters are crucial, it has a place where it was needed, that has passed. Number thirty, thirty-two, I'm sorry. Remove the blue part which is the officer's recommendation and I say, are there any other? They say the question is about council committees, do they need any modifications? Officers recommend that we should have a meeting procedure, local laws stand for committees. I'm saying no, that strangles discussion and recommendations, committees are a place to robustly resolve issues. Applying regimented processes can make for the same decision making at council meetings. There will be no point turning up to committee meetings then going to a council for determination with the same debate ending up in the council meetings. Swan had committees in the past and they made the, the recommendations and subsequently they had the same problem of doing the same thing twice and so they were dispossessed. And the next one is, oh, I'm sorry, microphone's too close. Thirty-three, I'm adding to the staff recommendation about the electors' meetings. Now I'm saying usefulness needs to be considered to a small number of electors representing a hundred and fifty thousand people. Petitions can be used to raise key issues, reviewing the annual report to satisfy the Corporations Act and taking questions about the report for accountability is supported. And for thirty-four, I'm saying, says, do you have other comments or suggestions? And I come back to the, the point about the second reserving their right to debate later and a, a matter. So that's my list, Madam Chair.
Okay, so I know that was quite a bit to take on just then and this is where we're in the trick. We have one minute and three seconds to ask any general questions before we then need to, this is it, move back to meeting procedural laws. So has anyone got a question within the fifty seconds? And councillor Hallard, I think it was your hand up first.
Thank you, it was about item three, sorry, item nine, which was the addition of the question must be from a resident or rate payer of the city, I'm just wondering how we propose to know that.
Ask them.
Okay, that was your standard ask. Councillor Hallard, for Dominic, you've got twenty-seven seconds to ask a question.
Right, I just wanted to ask, is it possible for us to, since we've gone through this list, just take it straight to the vote and vote on individual items?
We will be working through each individual item.
And vote on it as, just go.
Any last questions for ten seconds? Nope. Sorry about that.
I've got a, got a question, I thought there was going to be time for us to respond to this and I was told that I would get that and that's why I didn't ask questions. But now I'm told I can't ask questions, so this, this hasn't worked for me.
Can I ask a dream? Extend the.
Through the chair, you, you have two options at this point in time. Firstly, you've seen there are quite a few amendments to, that councillor Henderson proposes to put each of those. My recommendation, you should do with it individually because of the nature of the motion. Some you might have no objections to and as you move quickly through them. I've also suggested to the mayor, as we're approaching the eight o'clock mark, we have the break now, rather than continue the meeting, the staff will be going home, it's only myself, the governance staff will be staying here for the rest of the meeting. And then you have the opportunity during the debate on each item for any questions, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Mr CEO. So we need to now resume to, resume our standing orders. Councillor Bowman, another second, or councillor Henderson, is there anyone against? Let's carry. Okay, so what we'll do is we'll break for that ten minutes and then we will resume after the break. If you've got any questions, you might go to catch councillor Henderson and clarify those points. And for those watching at home, we will resume again in ten minutes.
Okay, thank you very much councillors, so we're going to resume from 8.1.1 which is the Department of Local Government's Standardised Meeting Procedures Consultation Paper. We're going to move through one by one.
Amendment.
Councillor Johnson.
Thank you. Yeah, my amendment is that we modify item three which is the proposed order of business suitable. My amendment is to say yes with the addition of members' written questions on notice on items not on the agenda. If I can read that out again for the minute clock.
I have, I've already explained that we're going to start with one and move through each of those items.
Yeah, but we now restored meeting procedures local law and I'm moving an amendment to the substantive motion.
Madam Chair.
So there's no explanation.
Mr CEO.
Well, that's the bridge to the meeting procedure local law.
So through the chair, just as we've already, Chair had already determined it's a complex motion and given advice she was starting with item one. We would get to item three in three items' time, but it'd be a very simple process, just determine if no, alternative for the one, two, and then councillor Johnson if you're seeking to do yours for three, that would be the first point.
Okay.
Okay, so we'll start with item one, if any councillor would like to make an amendment or debate the item, please let me know. So move through, are there any councillors who'd like to amend item number one? No. Item number two. Item number three.
Amendment. Item number three.
I've already raised that. At the commencement of the break, we hadn't got an alternate motion, we simply flagged that there were many items you wished to withdraw councillor Henderson, and that we'd have to deal with them and it was a complex motion and one by one. So the councillor, as I advised, the mayor councillor Johnson's jumped in first ahead of you with his amendment, which you'll now have to consider then after that, depending if it fails and come back to yours.
Madam Mayor, I dissent from that, I started this process off by saying that I had multiple amendments to make and that means that I go first.
If it's appropriate through you, Mr CEO, I'd like to continue the process that we began.
Well, that's not how this works, if you're moving a motion of dissent, sorry, point of order, Madam Mayor. If councillor Henderson wishes to move a motion of dissent, he needs to do that and get it seconded. But you can't move a motion of dissent that changes the meeting procedures local law, so that's simply not possible. So I've moved an amendment and to the substantive motion, I can't see any way of changing that through a dissent motion, maybe we can get some advice on that.
My dissent was on the CEO, not of your ruling, Madam Chair.
Thank you councillor Henderson, but councillor Bowman, did you have something to add there?
Madam Mayor, I was just going to ask you a question, since I moved the motion to suspend standing orders, my understanding is councillor Henderson had a number of changes to make, i.e. amendments, and I questioned, and the question was, how is it best to be dealt with? At that time, the deputy mayor suggested one way, I suggested another way, and we allowed the discussion to occur. My understanding, and correct me if I was wrong, was after that fifteen minutes, we were going to go back to councillor Henderson's items and then I understand we were going to put them individually. That's how I understood it, but perhaps I'm now wrong.
Okay, so we do have a situation here where obviously we have, it's an unusual one for tonight, we do have this list of items to get through. We now have an amendment from councillor, sorry, deputy mayor, and I need to take some advice on how to move forward through this, particularly from a legal perspective, from local government law. Through you, Mr CEO, is there a way forward that we can move through these amendments?
Through the chair, look, this is no easy path in all of this, there are a large number of amendments which councillor Johnson has flagged. He didn't actually move any specific amendment at the time we did, he flagged that he was going to move a number of amendments. We asked him how many, he said there were twelve. He also indicated some were simple word changes and some were complex, if I'm right, if my memory is right. There is no standing amendment then, it's just a guidance. We suggested that it be dealt with a complex motion, therefore we'd take each point on the way through. That's my understanding of it. On that basis, then the mayor has started the process, it's any councillor, she started with one, and then two. When we got to three councillor Johnson had jumped in. So I think, I can't tell you how to rule on this, Madam Chair, that's your call, that you would consider the amendment from councillor Johnson first. Then if there was, if that got up, then that becomes part of the substantive motion. If not, you would revert to councillor Henderson. But there is no easy way to do when you've got thirty-four points in which at least a dozen are going to be discussed.
Councillor Johnson, what's your amendment?
Okay, thank you Madam Mayor, thank you Mr CEO. My amendment is to delete the red text on page six, section three.
Just one moment, sorry, delete the text on.
So on page six of twenty, that's item number three.
Just one moment.
Madam Mayor, because it hasn't been moved yet, I dissent from your decision to allow deputy mayor to go for it, because I made it clear that I had a number of amendments to make, so I dissent from your decision.
Do I have a seconder for the procedural, sorry, procedural motion for the dissent motion? Through councillor Henderson has moved a dissent motion, do I have a seconder? No, so the dissent motion lapses and we move back to councillor Johnson. Councillor Johnson, you've said page six.
Page six of twenty in the blue book.
In the blue book, this one here, if you can all turn to page six.
Section three, which is right at the top.
It's page twelve, just for clarification.
Sorry?
It's page twelve in the agenda if anyone's confused.
Yeah, there's a double numbering scheme here, so it's page six of twenty.
If anyone's not sure, please let me know, but currently at the moment we're at the top of page six in the blue agenda here, okay? And councillor Johnson is amending it by asking to remove the red text.
My amendment is to remove the red text, delete the red text and substitute the following. Yes, full stop, with the addition...
Just go slow please for the minute clock.
With the addition of members' written questions on notice on items not in the agenda. I can say it again. So it's yes with the addition of members' written questions on notice on items not on the agenda.
So is there, can I have a seconder please? Councillor Catalano, is there anyone who wishes to debate it? Is there anyone against first?
Question.
Question councillor Bowman.
I'm not a hundred percent sure what we're doing now, because I haven't been provided this in writing beforehand. I can't see, I don't know if it's number three in the red text or number three in the bigger font as well. And as such, I'm not satisfied that I know what I'm voting for, having just put this in front of me.
In which case I can read the entire text that we're deleting.
I was actually asking you, not the deputy mayor.
So councillor Bowman, currently at the moment, we were going to move through each item one by one. Councillor Johnson has decided that he would like to make an amendment to point three, to remove all of the red text underneath where it states three is the proposed order of business suitable, yes or no?
So madam mayor, on my page six of twenty, which is page twelve, point three is urgent business.
The box above, do you have the...
So that's why I was asking, so there's confusion there when we refer to page six, there's two page sixes of twenty and there's two number threes. So maybe it's just my sheet and mine's different, but I see three as urgent business. So can we just make sure somehow we've clarified each one of them, otherwise I'm going to be asking the same question each time.
Yeah, question.
Just one moment, deputy mayor, so it is right, that is it.
That's the piece we're proposing to change.
Okay, do you have that where it says number three in the grey texted box?
Yes, I do.
Okay. So you can see three in the highlighted underneath, urgent business is separate from that?
Yes, I do, but it's also number three.
Okay. We are discussing the top box in the small number three font.
And has the deputy mayor given a reason?
And your reason deputy mayor?
Because written questions on notice are important.
I'll just wait for that to be updated.
And they don't take up any time in the meeting.
Just let this one up there. Was that correct deputy mayor? The reason, because councillor questions are important?
Because councillor questions are important and they do not take up any time in the meeting.
Okay. Now we had a question councillor Miles.
I'd like to move that the motion now be put, thank you.
It's an amendment.
Is anyone against? Just one moment.
So through the chair councillor Johnson moved the amendment, seconded by councillor Catalano. I know councillor Naude also is now, but Catalano was the one who's noted for this one. Councillor Miles has moved a procedural motion to put the proposed amendment. You'd need to go and have, you've got a seconder, then you can move the procedural motion, then you can come back and...
The seconder was councillor Catalano, is that correct?
Second of my amendment.
Okay. Do I have a seconder for the procedural, councillor Ringo, who was first? Councillor Ringo.
So question, can you move a procedural motion that the motion now be put when there is actually no motion, it's an amendment? I don't think so.
Through you, Mr CEO.
Thank you, what you're trying to move is the amendment be put rather than the motion, which is part of the substantive motion. So it's not moving for the motion be put, it's moving for the amendment be put, which is obviously then forming part of the substantive motion.
So point of order here is that permissible procedural motions, this is on page twenty-six, there's that a member may move any of the following procedural motions. That the motion now be put, we're not moving a motion, we're moving an amendment.
Through the chair, this is what referred to as amending motion, so the amendment is a type motion. An amendment, an alternate motion, a foreshadowed motion, as per eight point three. A member may move an amendment to a motion, so what's being moved is an amendment to the motion. My understanding, unless the governance manager wishes to disagree with me, is that the meeting procedures allow for this to be put as a procedural motion.
Got a question, where's the definition then of an amendment, because I can't see it under terms used. Must be actually in the... I've got one. Page five, is the word amendment there? Yeah, that's right, so it doesn't say it's an amendment motion, it's an amendment, that's a different thing to a motion.
Thank you, Madam Chair, I've given you my guidance, an amendment is an amendment to the motion. My guidance to you is it forms the same basis in the meeting procedures. You're going to debate each amendment as part of a complex motion, which then brings it back to the substantive motion. I'm just giving you my guidance, I think the governance manager has agreed with that guidance, that this will form a motion that can be put as a procedural motion.
That's right, but if you look at section eight point three, there is no definition of amendment that says an amendment is a motion, an amendment is an amendment not a motion. So there can be no procedural motion to put my amendment. And that's quite clear from the meeting procedures local law, you can look in the definitions, you look under section, section eight point three amendments, it is not a motion, it is an amendment.
I have a question from councillor Podovnyk.
So just so I'm clear, we can put this straight to the vote, is that correct?
No.
Through you, Mr CEO.
Again, Madam Chair, I've given you my guidance, a member may move an amendment to a motion, it is an amending motion, that's what the nature of an amendment is. You are moving something, which is, a motion means you are moving something, in this case you are moving the amendment, that's a motion. It can't be anything else but a motion. You are proposing to do something, that means I'm proposing an action which is a motion. An amendment may be dealt with as a procedural motion, just as a full motion might, or a foreshadowed might, or an alternate motion. I can only give you guidance that's backed up by the governance manager, it's up to you to rule, Madam.
Got a question here. Can somebody show me, Mr CEO, can you show me where it says that an amendment is called an amendment motion? Now, we've been down this path before and we've proven there's no such thing. Where does it say an amendment motion? You've got eight point three, page twenty-two, or you've got the definition.
Deputy mayor, just let us clarify that please.
Through the chair, what is a motion? Now, we're going to get pedantic at this point of time, a motion is a proposal, comes from a member to change something. That's what a motion is, you raise a motion and it is moved and seconded. The motion you're moving is to amend something, that's what a motion is. If not, the word amendment itself doesn't have any context, it has to be a proposal.
Thank you, thank you very much, Mr CEO, and thank you deputy mayor, we need to move this process along, so I'd like, deputy mayor, I'm just speaking, thank you. What's your point of order councillor Bowman?
We have a procedural motion in front of us, we look at page twenty-eight of our meeting procedure local law, it quite clearly indicates that there's no interruption. It's to be put, no debate, which includes, would include questions as well.
As I said, we need to move this along now, we've spent more than enough time on this, and the more complex this becomes tonight, the longer we'll be here, we've already discussed this needs to move on. Can we please move through this without the complexities that are needed to make these changes, which we could have been halfway through this list by now? Okay, so if we could just move through this list, that would be much appreciated tonight, I appreciate your input, thank you deputy mayor, but this needs to be moved and we need to move this thing. I'll get some governance on that, through you, Mr CEO, will I be in breach? Or through governance, will I be in breach if I move this forward to continue this debate?
Through the chair, in accordance with the meeting procedures, you control the meeting, Madam Chair, you make a ruling and that's it.
And my question was, will there be a possibility of a breach? So deputy mayor, just one moment please, you need to stop making those comments, thank you.
No, you can't be breached for things done during the course of the meeting where you're given guidance that relates to the conduct of your meeting procedures. The guidance you've been given is professional staff, including city's governance manager.
Thank you, Mr CEO, and the process to move forward now, can you please assist... Thank you, Mr CEO, and the process to move forward now, can you please, uh, assist the council to move forward now in this process? So we understand where we're at and we can move to the next item.
So through the chair, a procedural motion's been called by councillor Miles, I don't know whether it's been seconded at this point of time, councillor Ringo. Councillor Dawn also had a hand up, that was the motion now be put. It may be that you're going to have many of these on the night in order to truncate the process, um, and therefore not have to debate each one. So you now need to, you now need to, uh, vote on that.
Okay, so those in favour of the amendment? Procedural motion? That the amendment now be put. Councillor Ringo, couns- sorry councillor Dawn. Councillor Ringo, councillor Bowman, councillor Jones, councillor McCulloch, councillor Miles, councillor Knight, councillor Zenino, councillor Henderson, councillor Podovnik, councillor Howlett and myself. And, sorry, it was twelve, and against is deputy mayor Johnson and councillor Catalano. So it's carried twelve two.
I move the motion now be put.
Deputy mayor?
Yes, I can. We've got a substantive motion, I'm now moving the motion now be put. Yeah, no, we're back to the substantive motion.
Through the chair.
Through you, Mr CEO. Okay, thank you.
Through the chair, the procedural motion has been carried, we now need to rule on the amendment. Um, uh, and the amendment is the one proposed by councillor Johnson, uh, and that's what your motion's at.
So now we've put that to the vote, we need to now rule on that amendment, those in favour of councillor, uh, deputy mayor's, uh, amendment, please raise your hand. And, um, deputy mayor Johnson, councillor Catalano, councillor Dawn, councillor Knight and councillor Howlett. And those against? Councillor Ringo, councillor How- uh, sorry councillor Bowman, councillor Jones, councillor McCulloch, uh, councillor Miles, councillor Zenino, councillor Henderson, councillor Podovnik and myself. So it's lost nine five.
Madam chair, I have amendments to move.
Pardon, what was that?
I said I had amendments to move.
Thank you. Okay, so now. Councillor Henderson, would you like to continue on, on the list from where you were, we got to, we went through. Number one, two, there were no changes, councillor Henderson, I think you had some changes for councillor, if you could just let us know for number three, thank you. No, because, because an amendment was made.
So, okay, um, my, my amendment that I move for number three is to add the words. If the city, in addition to what's currently there, after the word questions on non-agenda-related item matters at. That's the.
Non-agenda related matters at. Question councillor Podovnik? Sorry, seconder, thank you. Is there anyone against? Do you wish to debate it? Thank you, if you'd like to, uh, open debate councillor Henderson.
I'm, I'm not going to debate these, um, madam mayor, I think, um, we'll all make our mind up on this.
I move that the item be put.
Thank you councillor Bowman. Is there a seconder, councillors Zenino? So we put that motion to the vote?
So now, madam chair, we're just going to do the procedural motion first, to see that the motion be put, that there'll be no further debate on this particular amendment.
So those in favour of the procedural motion? Councillor Ru- uh, councillor Dawn, councillor Ringo, coun- so sorry, I've been going too fast, so sorry for the minute take, my apologies. Councillor Dawn, councillor Ringo, councillor Bowman, councillor Jones, councillor McCulloch. Councillor Miles. Councillor Zenino, councillor Henderson, councillor Podovnik, councillor Howlett and myself, and those against? Deputy mayor Johnson, councillor Catalano and councillor Knight. So it's carried eleven three. Now we need to vote on the motion, on the amended motion. Amending motion. Don't worry, we'll all get there, this is a big learning curve, and this is a unusual event tonight. Now. Councillor Henderson. Right, so those in favour of councillor Henderson's amendment? Right, of councillor Ringo, councillor Bowman, councillor Jones, councillor McCulloch. Councillor Miles, councillor Zenino, councillor Henderson, councillor Podovnik and myself. Nine, and those against? Deputy mayor Johnson, councillor Catalano, councillor, uh, sorry, um, Dawn, councillor. Just going around, councillor Knight and councillor Howlett. So that's carried, so nine five, thank you. Right, so we move on to number four.
Thank you, madam mayor.
Councillor Henderson.
I move that we add, um, to the officer's, uh, comment, yes, agree, uh, yes, comma, agree, absolute ma- majority required.
Do I have a seconder? Councillor Podovnik? Is there anyone against? Do you wish to debate it? No? There's no debate, put that straight to the vote. All those in favour? Councillor Dawn, councillor Ringo, councillor Bowman, councillor Jones, councillor McCulloch, councillor My- uh, Miles, councillor Zenino, councillor Henderson, councillor Podovnik and myself. Those against? Deputy mayor Johnson, councillor Catalano. Councillor Knight and councillor Howlett. So carried ten four, so move through to number five. Just, if you have, just raise your hand and let me know that you want to. Uh, number six.
Uh, number five.
Sorry, what was that? Is there anyone for number five?
Number five.
Thank you councillor Henderson.
All the ones that I highlighted, madam mayor. Um, so, uh, the amendment, uh, for number five is simply the word yes and remove, uh, the rest of the text, uh, from staff.
Councillor Bowman's the seconder, is there anyone against? There's no one against. It's carried, it becomes part of the substantive motion, is that correct? Move to number six.
Thank you, madam mayor, um, I move, uh, that the officer's, uh, recommendation in blue is deleted and. Uh, the comment is yes for Swan, earlier meetings, uh, times of five thirty PM to ten PM would aid in resolving meeting times, a meeting, close times. Night meetings, uh, longer than five hours can result in poor decision making.
Do I have a seconder? Councillor Bowman, is there anyone against? Do you wish to debate it? Councillor Henderson?
Um, I'll just briefly say that, um, um, some people are having a bubble H Y, uh, when it suits them and, uh, this, this is. Um, different to what we have in our system currently. Uh, I, I simply say that this is an opportunity to, uh, turn our meetings potentially into five hours. Um, and, um, have a half hour lunch break instead of an hour, where we basically sit around and waste time, thank you.
Thank you councillor Bowman, nothing to add? Uh, is anyone against?
Yeah, my concern with this one is, uh, uh, where councillor Henderson has put for Swan, earlier meeting time of five thirty to ten thirty PM would aid in resolving meeting close time. Unfortunately, um, many councillors, um, have full-time jobs and would find it very difficult to get here for five thirty. Uh, and also many members of the community have previously advised, uh, that five thirty is too early for them. I think about six years ago, we moved the start time from five thirty PM to six PM for just that reason. It is important to start meetings, uh, at a time that people can get there, many other councillors, councils, uh, start their meetings, uh, later, at six thirty, seven or even later. So bringing it forward to five thirty, uh, I don't think is appropriate. Uh, look, the department is not intending to, uh, to specify the start of meeting times, I'm pretty sure of that, but I don't like to see in here. Um, a, a statement that meeting times could begin at five thirty, because it's profoundly wrong. So, uh, otherwise I would support it, but, um, it, it's difficult to see how to, uh, how to, uh, how to resolve this, so, uh, I'm opposed to it.
Thank you, deputy mayor, is there anyone for the motion that would like to speak to the motion? Anyone, councillor Catalano? Second by deputy mayor Johnson? Just one moment, through you, Mr CEO. Just one moment.
Uh, I think the observation by councillor Bowman is that councillor, deputy mayor can't move a procedural motion to a motion he's already, uh, put. Um.
Just one moment.
With the exception of nine one, a member who has moved second or spoken for against the motion cannot move a procedural motion. So a member who's moved or second, seconded, in this case it's councillor Johnson's motion, he can't, uh, move a procedural motion.
Thank you, councillor Ringo.
So I'm referring to clause nine two, uh, and if you note under two one. Uh, that talks about the procedural motion, but that is in regard to the ruling of a presi- a presiding member. Now.
So through you, madam mayor, I would like to second the procedural motion.
Just one moment, let us just move this one.
So I'm not sure that he can't, if I'm looking just down again, that that one was only specific to clause nine one H, which is the ruling. Um, of the member be disagreed with, so I don't know councillor Bowman, uh, any, I can't, top my head, see a clause which says he can't move a procedural motion. On any other type of procedural motion, which in this case is when the matter, motion be put, which is nine one A. Um, that he, that councillor Johnson can't move or second his own. I can't see anything that's stopping. So we've got councillor Catalano and councillor Johnson, as I understand, a procedural motion?
So I've called for and against, but I have councillor Ringo, you've now asked to second, was it?
We're all looking at semantics here, so at the moment, if we say councillor Johnson can't, you had councillor Ringo, and I thought we had councillor Catalano in there, but I could have been wrong.
Yes.
You moved the procedural motion and councillor Ringo is seconding it, so councillor Johnson withdrawn, so we're not in conflict, madam chair.
So then councillor Ringo gets to speak to the motion first?
No, there's just procedural motion, which is now that you've moved the motion, so you need to, you need to resolve the procedural motion.
Okay. So is there anyone else to speak to that still, that's it, we just put it to the vote? So I'll put that procedural motion to the vote, those in favour? Councillor Catalano, sorry deputy mayor, Johnson councillor Catalano, councillor. Dawn, councillor Ringo, councillor Bowman, councillor Jones, councillor McCulloch, councillor Miles. Councillor Zenino, councillor Henderson, councillor Podovnik, councillor Howlett and myself. And those against? Councillor Knight, so thirteen. Carried thirteen one, now we go back. Councillor Henderson, now we're going to move councillor Henderson's.
Proposal.
Proposal. So those in favour? Councillor Bowman, councillor Jones, councillor McCulloch, councillor Zenino, councillor Henderson and myself. And those against? Uh, deputy mayor Johnson, councillor Catalano, councillor Dawn, councillor Ringo, councillor Miles, councillor Knight, councillor Podovnik and councillor Howlett.
Lost six eight.
Six eight, okay. So, is there anyone who'd like to speak to point seven? No, we move on to point eight. Moving through to nine. Ten.
There's nine, I had an amendment for number nine. Uh, so for number nine, I wanted to add, uh, a point four, I think it was. Um, that the question must be from a resident or right pair of the city.
Thank you councillor Bowman, is there anyone against? No, if not, that's carried, so we're up to number ten.
Number ten, I moved the amendment to remove the officer's recommendation and respond with no. This is open to abuse, as has been seen, but can be accepted by presiding officer at an agenda forum. A registered professional practitioner representing application should be able to speak for their client at an ordinary council meeting, should the presiding member allow the question.
Do I have a seconder? Councillor Jones, is there anyone against? Do you wish to debate it? No? Put that straight to the vote, no one wishes to? Okay, to the vote, so those in favour? Uh, we had councillor Bowman, councillor Jones, councillor McCulloch, councillors Zenino, councillor Henderson. That's it, and those in favour? Sorry, those against, uh, deputy mayor, councillor Catalano, councillor Dawn, councillor Ringo, councillor Miles, councillor Knight. Councillor Podovnik, councillor Howlett and myself. So that, sorry, nine.
Five nine lost.
Five nine, that was lost. Yep, so move to number. Eleven, number twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen.
Yes, thank you. Um, I move to add to the officer's recommended, recommendation after the words ten signatures. There should be a maximum of two fifty words detailing the petition.
Do I have a seconder? Councillor Podovnik, is there anyone against? Councillor Howlett, do you wish to debate it? No, we put that straight to the vote, that becomes straight. Straight to the vote, those in favour? Of councillor Henderson's amendment. So we have councillor Ringo, councillor Jones, councillor McCulloch, councillor Miles, councillor Knight. Councillor Zenino, councillor Henderson, councillor Podovnik and myself, and those against? Deputy mayor Johnson, councillor Catalano, councillor Dawn and councillor Howlett. Carried nine four, and we move on to number sixteen, no, you give fifteen to send to me. Sixteen, yes, that's right, sixteen. Nothing there, uh, number seventeen.
Number seventeen.
Councillor Henderson.
Thank you, madam mayor, I, I move to add to the officer's recommendation, should the motion be accepted by the presiding member. As warranting addition to the agenda in less than fifteen working days, it could be included as a supplementary item.
Do I have a seconder? Councillor Howlett, is there anyone against? No one against, no one wishes to speak. And we put that to the vote, those in favour, sorry, no one gets carried? Okay, we move on to number eighteen.
Thank you, madam mayor. I move to add to the officer's recommendation, and that is, operational matters are to be avoided.
Do I have a seconder councillor, oh, I don't know councillor Jones, your hand went up first? Councillor Jones, uh, is a seconder, um, is anyone against?
Question.
Question count, deputy mayor.
How can a councillor involve themselves in an operational matter in a council chamber? I don't understand.
Through you, Mr CEO.
Through a notice of motion, it's not operational, it's a motion, a motion.
So I, I need to be clear as to what the real question is, I can see that the addition is the word, the operational matters are to be avoided. Uh, we, we're dealing with item eighteen?
Yep.
Eighteen. So eighteen says operational matters are to be avoided.
You want the words, the red words, to be added in? Yep, and the question from deputy mayor was, how do councillors become involved in operational matters in?
How, how is a notice of motion operational, I don't understand that.
That would actually go back to you councillor Henderson.
So it talks about from the city's perspective, notices of motions must be in writing. And so it goes on to go into detail. That's not what's actually in, in the.
In the blue copy? You're looking at the blue copy versus the handout?
I'm looking at the page eighteen, which is on number eighteen.
Page eighteen, whereabouts are you looking?
So on page eighteen, down the bottom at eighteen, which is what we're dealing with here. It says, it talks about there must be in writing. So we're talking about outside of a council meeting, not necessarily in a council meeting.
Just one moment. So eighteen, are these proposals for motion suitable, yes or no? And on our running sheet, are these proposals for motion suitable, yes or no? And the answer is no, the city would suggest more guidance is required for notices of motions. Then it changes to also differentiate the processes for alternate motions for shadow motions and amendments. So it's different to what is in.
So as I understand this through the chair, what the first part is, is the city is saying, what notice of motion, the department needs to provide more direct guidance as to what type of motion is accepted. And what councillor Henderson is seeking to add is motions that deal with operational matters. It doesn't say aren't to be included, but just says are to be avoided. Through the chair, you're really asking the department to provide some more direct guidance on this, rather than just put out a position. Tell us, tell us what you actually made.
Okay. So we were at, there was a question from the deputy mayor, we had a mover and a second.
It's a question. So if we're looking at item eighteen on the motions and amendments, eighteen, are these proposals for motion suitable? What we've got here is some text in blank and then some text in red, but in the, in the, in this blue document here.
Yes, we have two different parts of information there.
It's not clear what's meant by this.
If you could provide some guidance through this please, Mr CEO, for the two different, lots of information.
I really wish I knew what guidance to provide you, madam chair.
So do I. So currently at the moment.
Madam mayor, I apologize for interrupting. If councillors are confused by it, I'm happy to withdraw it and just stay as is. I'm not going to die on my sword on all this stuff.
Okay. Would you like to withdraw that item? No, so just withdraw the amendment? Thank you. All right, so let's put this. Keep going. All right, so we move on to number nineteen?
So I move an amendment that the staff say yes. And then I go on to talk about however the seconders should be able to reserve their right to speak at any time during the debate if they so wish, rather than after the mover. This can improve debate and time taken.
Thank you, do you have a second, Deputy? councillor Bowman, is there anyone against? Deputy mayor, do you wish to debate it? We put it straight to the vote. Those in favour of councillor Henderson's? Councillor Dawn, councillor Ringo, councillor Bowman, sorry, councillor Jones, councillor McCulloch. Councillor Miles, councillor Zanino, councillor Henderson, councillor Prudovnik, councillor Howlett and myself. And those against? Deputy mayor Johnson and councillor Catalano and councillor Knight. So it's eleven three. Motion is carried. Okay, we're moving on now to number twenty.
We've already dealt with twenty, madam chair.
That's fine, move to twenty one.
So I move an amendment to twenty one. The officer's response is yes. With the exception of asking specific questions on matters raised during debate. During, I should say the debate, I think.
So what was that? Changed the wording?
With the exception of asking specific questions on matters raised during the debate. I mean, it's obvious, but it needs to be said, I think.
We need to insert the word there? Do you have a second, councillor Miles? Is there anyone against? No, carried. And move to number twenty one? Twenty two? Twenty three? Twenty four? Twenty five? Twenty six?
Okay, madam mayor, I move an addition to the officer's recommendation. Other procedural motions should go directly to the vote without further debate.
Do you have a second, councillor Bowman? Is there anyone against? No. Do you wish to debate it? Yep, so put that to the vote. Those in favour of councillor Henderson's amendment? Councillor Bowman, councillor Ringo, councillor Jones, councillor McCulloch, councillor Miles, councillor Zanino, councillor Henderson, councillor Prudovnik and myself. And those against? Deputy mayor Johnson, councillor Catalano, councillor Dawn, councillor Knight and councillor Howlett. Carried nine five. And we move on to number twenty seven? Number twenty eight? Number twenty nine?
Madam mayor, this one might be controversial. I move that you delete the word yes and that no councillor should be in attendance. In person is much more interactive. The screen isolates that. And as, and that adds thirty and thirty one below, there's more to come on it.
Thank you. Do you have a second, Deputy? Councillor Bowman, is there anyone against? Do you wish to debate it? No, then I'll put that to the vote. Those in favour of councillor Henderson's amendment? Councillor Bowman, councillor McCulloch, councillor Zanino and councillor Henderson. And those against? Deputy mayor Johnson, councillor Catalano, councillor Dawn, councillor Ringo, councillor Miles, councillor Knight, councillor Prudovnik, councillor Howlett and myself. Sorry, she didn't have, you didn't have your hand up, did you councillor Jones? Or did you?
That was four, four ten.
Okay, thank you.
The motion's lost four ten.
Yep. Yep, we need to move quickly, we have. Okay. Number thirty?
Yes, I have an addition there as well or a change. So this is about whether it's beneficial or not to have electronic meetings. And the officers say yes, I say no, technology fails regularly, they should not be used. This should not be used as an escape from going out to a meeting.
Do you have a second, councillor Bowman? Is there anyone against? Do you wish to debate it? I'll put that straight to the vote. Those in favour? Councillor Bowman, councillor Jones, councillor McCulloch, councillor Zanino, councillor Henderson. Those against? Deputy mayor Johnson, councillor Catalano, councillor Dawn, councillor Ringo, councillor Miles, councillor Knight, councillor Prudovnik, councillor Howlett and myself. Lost five nine. Up to thirty one, councillor Henderson.
Thank you madam mayor. Number thirty one says, do you think changes to electronic meetings or electronic attendance are required? And the city says no, and I'd like to change that to yes. This may be useful for committees and agenda forums, but not decision-making where matters are crucial. It has a place when it was needed, that is past.
Do you have a second, Deputy? Councillor Bowman, is there anyone against? Do you wish to debate it? No, put that to the vote. Those in favour of the amendment from councillor Henderson? Councillor Bowman, councillor Jones, councillor Zanino and councillor Henderson. And those against? Deputy mayor Johnson, councillor Catalano, councillor Dawn, councillor Ringo, councillor McCulloch, councillor Miles, councillor Knight, councillor Prudovnik, councillor Howlett and myself. That's lost, four ten. Let's keep going, we've got about three minutes, four minutes. Number thirty two?
Thank you madam mayor. Again, delete the officer's recommendation. And this is to do with having meetings, committee meetings as under our meeting procedure local law, if you like. And I say no, strangles discussion and recommendations. Committees are a place to robustly resolve all issues, applying regimented process can make for decision, can make for the same decision-making at council meetings. There would be no point turning up to committee meetings and then going to council for determination with the same debate ending up in the council meeting. Swan had committee meetings in the past that made recommendations, and those committees have subsequently been disbanded.
Thank you councillor Henderson, do I have a second? Councillor Prudovnik, is there anyone against? Do you wish to debate it? Put that to the vote. Those in favour? Councillor Henderson and councillor Prudovnik. Do you want to raise, and those against? Deputy mayor? Councillor Dawn, councillor Catalano, councillor Ringo, councillor Bowman, going slowly for the minute clock. Councillor Jones, councillor McCulloch, councillor Miles, councillor Knight. Councillor Zanino, was that for or against? And councillor Howlett and myself. Was against? Lost two twelve. Okay, and we're moving on to number thirty three, councillor Henderson?
We're getting to the end. This one is to do with electors' meetings. And the department is looking at applying standard laws to electors' meetings. So what the city have recommended is yes, and I agree with that. And with an addition, the usefulness needs to be considered. Though a small number of electors represent 150,000 people, petitions can be used to raise key issues. Reserving annual reports to satisfy the Corporations Act and taking questions about the report for accountability is supported.
Thank you, do you have a second? Councillor Ringo, is there anyone against? Do you wish to debate it? I'll put that to the vote. Those in favour? Councillor Ringo, councillor Jones, councillor McCulloch, councillor Zanino, councillor Henderson and councillor Prudovnik. Those against? Deputy mayor Johnson, councillor Catalano, councillor Dawn, councillor Bowman, councillor Miles, councillor Knight, councillor Howlett and myself. Lost six eight. And the last, number thirty four?
The last one, number thirty four, councillors who supported this when we dealt with it further up in the list. And I'm suggesting to add this here because it's talking about additions. Yes, allowing a second to reserve the right to debate at another time during the debate, debated item as noted above.
Do you have a second, councillor Jones? Is there anyone against? Councillor Miles, is anyone like, wish to debate it? No, put that to the vote. Those in favour? Councillor Ring, councillor Dawn, councillor Ringo, councillor Bowman, councillor Jones, councillor McCulloch, councillor Zanino, councillor Henderson, councillor Prudovnik, councillor Howlett and myself. Those against? Deputy mayor Johnson, councillor Catalano, councillor Miles, councillor Knight. Carried ten four.
Thank you for your endurance councillors.
Just one moment. Before you go, we're not finished yet. So now? We need to move substantive. Motion?
Through the chair, we might just need to allow a minute for the minute clerk to note which ones are now part of the substantive motion. I'm just wandering through the chair if we do something like this. The officer's recommendation as amended through items one to thirty four be, become the substantive motion. That would be the recommendation. Yes, but you've got the substantive motion as amended. It goes back to the substantive one. So that is now part of the substantive, you're right. So it's late. We need to then take the motion as amended. It's now what's going to be put to the vote. You need to ask, we want you to speak again to it.
Councillor, anyone who'd like to speak to the amended motion?
Do you want to give the mover or the second or a right to?
Right of reply for the mover or the second? Yes, councillor Miles?
Yes, thank you madam mayor. I greatly appreciate all the feedback and contributions of my fellow elected members. And I think the process that we've just endured over the past how long perfectly illustrates the importance of a strong meeting procedures to keep business of council progressing respectfully and effectively. And I thank you all for your contribution.
Right, now we put that to the vote. Those in favour? Councillor Dawn, councillor Ringo, councillor Bowman, councillor Jones, councillor McCulloch, councillor Miles, councillor Knight, councillor Zanino, councillor Henderson, Prudovnik, councillor Howlett and myself. And those that are against? Councillor Johnson and councillor Catalano. Motion is carried. Now, I'd like to close the meeting at nine oh two pm and thank everybody else for coming and for staff for staying behind. And you'll see on Wednesday night for the agenda.